Welcome to the Revere City Council meeting of January 24th. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Roll call of the members, Councillor Cagliandro.
Here.
Here, Councillor Fiore.
Here.
Here, Councillor Keefe.
Here.
Here, Councillor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councillor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councillor Novoselsky.
Here.
Here, Councillor Rizzo is absent, Councillor Rotundo is absent, Councillor Sorino.
Here.
Here, Councillor Silvestri.
Here.
Here, and Council President Visconti.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of January 10th?
So moved, Mr. President.
Calendar item number three, introduction of the City Council Rules of Order for adoption.
There are two amendments on the floor offered by Councillor Fiore. Madam Clerk, can we take up each amendment separately and do a roll call separately as well? Councillor Fiore?
Due to the duplicitous nature of one of them, we would have to amend Rule 8 as well. Should I call your attention to Rule 8 on page four?
I believe that has the same language as Rule 28. Is that correct?
That's correct, so it would delete, "No councillor shall speak on more than three motions which he or she introduces at each meeting." Three motions shall include those motions submitted as late or late-late motions. Again, I would like that deleted for the reasons I offered, the other two motions, that I don't think the council sends us here with the expectations of us having, the public sends us here by having the limited ability to advocate and speak on their behalf. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councillor Keefe?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've spoken to Councillor Fiore, and I just want to clarify how I'll be voting this evening. I would be, I will be voting in favor if, either way, if it goes on Rule 28 change, the first one, being able to speak on the multiple motions, if that's the will of the council, because for the most part, everyone speaks, sometimes councils will speak many times on just one motion. But I don't feel that more than five motions should be put in front of the council per meeting. I just don't, and this is no offense, and I know Councillor Fiore probably agrees, I don't think that anyone can come up with five, more than five substantive motions per meeting, and I think it'll just clog up City Hall, and I think it'll overwhelm the clerk and city government. Thank you.
Okay. Does anybody else have any comments? If not, we'll take a roll call.
So we'll do each amendment as a separate vote?
Yes.
Do that, okay. So the first amendment by Councillor Fiore, proposed amendment, Rule 28 is hereby amended by striking the last paragraph. Members of the City Council shall restrict their remarks on motions, which they introduce to not more than three motions. The three motions shall include those motions submitted as late or late-late motions. On the amendment, Councillor Cagliandro?
Yes.
Voting yes, Councillor Fiore?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Novoselsky?
No.
No, Councillor Rizzo is absent, Councillor Rotundo is absent, Councillor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Silvestri?
No.
No, and Council President Visconti?
No.
No. That motion, that amendment does pass. The second proposed amendment was to Rule 30, is hereby amended by striking the following sentences. Members of the City Council shall introduce not more than five motions at any meeting of the City Council. The five motion limitation shall include those motions submitted as late motions. On the amendment, Councillor Cagliandro?
No.
No, Councillor Fiore?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Keefe?
No.
No, Councillor McKenna?
No.
No, Councillor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Novoselsky?
No.
No, Councillor Rizzo is absent, Councillor Rotundo is absent, Councillor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Silvestri?
No.
No, and Council President Visconti?
No.
No, that amendment fails. Now on the amendment, that was for Rule 8, that was just presented by Councillor Fiore. And the amendment to Rule 8 was as follows, that would be striking, "No councillor shall speak for more than," I'm sorry, uh, okay, I'm sorry. "No councillor shall speak on more than three motions which he or she introduces at each meeting. The three motions shall include those motions submitted as late or late-late motions." On the amendment, Councillor Cagliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Fiore?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Novoselsky?
No.
No, Councillor Rizzo is absent, Councillor Rotundo is absent, Councillor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Silvestri?
No.
No, and Council President Visconti?
No.
No, that amendment does pass, so there's no more amendments on the floor.
Mr. President, point of information.
Yes. Yes.
Rule 8, is that what we just did?
That is correct.
No, that's dealing with three minutes, not motions.
No, if you look down below.
This part is being stricken here, that was the request.
Okay. Thank you.
Now on the floor, as amended, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
On the Rules of Order as amended, Councillor Cagliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Fiore?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Novoselsky?
No.
No, Councillor Rizzo is absent, Councillor Rotundo is absent, Councillor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, the Rules of Order have been adopted for calendar year 2022.
Finally. Okay.
Mr. President, point of information, our inquiry on the unfinished business.
Go ahead, Councillor.
On the unfinished business, the last meeting, we had, I think we had hazard mitigation plan going to committee. Is that correct?
Mr. President? Because I want. It is, Mr. President, it is going to committee. I spoke with the clerk, we're going to have a committee meeting on February 7th before the next council meeting, and then that way we'll be able to dispense with it ASAP.
Excellent.
Because that's, you know, this mitigation plan is required in order for us to get grants from FEMA and MIMA.
Well, we'll get that done right away.
So I talked to Elle Baker today, you know, she's out injured, so she's not in the office, so she wanted to see if we can get that done as soon as possible, if not sooner.
We'll make a note of that, and we'll put, it's already scheduled.
Okay, thank you. When is it?
Okay. Continue with the order of business. Can I have a, if my colleagues don't mind, a suspension of rules?
So moved.
What I'd like to do is take up the committee of the whole meeting first, if that is okay. With that being said, we, we had a committee of the whole at 5:00 this eve, this evening to voice our, to talk about the location of the Wonderland site, and it has been ruled, the Wonderland site has been ruled in favor, we, the council has been in favor of the Wonderland site, so what I like to do is make a roll call, but we'll, we'll let former councillor Tony Zambuto speak.
Mr. President, I hate to do this, and it's not sour grapes or anything, but I'm told that none of my presentation went out over the air, that the TV went black, and I just checked with the TV people, and it did. So nobody heard anything I had to say. So now, I know you voted this, you're going to vote this out favorably, but I'd like to put on the record what I did say, because it did not go out over the air. You okay with that?
Councillor, former councillor, I'll give you the three minutes, how's that?
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Obviously, I'm here tonight to put some facts on the table. I spent 22 years as a city councillor here, protecting the taxpayers. I'm trying to prevent the city from making the most fiscally irresponsible mistake in the city's history. And it's not about the 25 million or the 50 million it's going to cost to take the property at Wonderland, or it's not about the 250 or 275 million it's going to cost in construction of the school. It's about taking Wonderland off the tax rolls. For example, Suffolk Downs will net the city $47 million a year in tax revenue when it's at full buildout. That's probably the best development project we're ever going to get in the history of the city. So let's assume that Wonderland is only half the same value as the 47 million. That's 23 and a half million a year. When you extrapolate that out to the 50 years, it's one point, almost $1.2 billion in lost tax revenue. So obviously, this is going to go on deaf ears, but I'm asking you not to vote, and not to vote for the Wonderland site and make this fiscally irresponsible mistake. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Zambuto.
We, we got, I just got confirmation.
Okay.
Through you, point of information, I did just get confirmation that it was aired, but maybe some people did not get it. You got it two times, don't worry about it, you want me to get the cameras back on F42?
I, I, okay, all right. Enough, 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 we're not going back and forth here. Okay.
Mr. President, point of information.
Go ahead, Councillor.
It was not on revered TV on cable, it was on YouTube and on Facebook, but not on.
Can I have some order, please? I'm done with that, it doesn't matter, he already spoke his mind, and I'm going to give it the man, I'm going to, he's a man of his word. If it wasn't on TV, I went and I took the man on his word. So that being said, we're going to move to a.
Mr. President?
Councillor.
Could I just again go on record that once a CM is picked, that we ask them that 100% of the job is union, and Revere residents do have a shot at working on that site?
Absolutely. Thank you for that, and I, I concur and agree. Okay. If I can continue, okay, so the committee of the whole voted favorably to recommend an approval of the following motion, that the City Council approve the building committee and school committee selection of the Wonderland site as the feasibility study preferred option for submission to the Mass School Building Authority and for further study during the schematic design. Madam Clerk, roll call the members, please.
On the motion, Councillor Cagliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Fiore?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Rizzo is absent, Councillor Rotundo is absent, Councillor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, the motion has been approved.
Mr. President?
Councillor Novoselsky?
Since we're already on the suspension of rules, I'd like to make a motion that reconsideration be not prevailed.
Okay. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you. Reconsideration fails, thank you. Back to the regular order of business, thank you.
Calendar item number four.
Congratulations, Dr. Kelly.
Calendar item number four, hearing called is ordered on a joint petition submitted by National Grid and Verizon to relocate one jointly owned pole number 2184 on View Street directly across the street from its existing location.
Proponents, those in favor, name and address for the record.
Good evening, councillors, my name is Moses Okokoro, I'm here on behalf of National Grid Electric side, my address is 170 Metford Street in Malden. So National Grid is requesting to move an existing pole on View Street from one side of the street to the opposite side to accommodate a customer's new driveway, thank you.
Any other proponents of this? Proponents? Okay. Hearing and seeing no other proponents, we're going to close that side. Opponents, anybody opposed of this? Please come forward. Name and address for the record.
My name is Arthur Arsenault, I have the property on View Street, Zero View Street, next to the location where the telephone pole is. I have, one of the problems that I have with that telephone pole, they want to move it across the street, which I don't have a problem with moving it across the street, I think there's, but the gentleman across the street, Hugh McClellan, he has a, he has a pole right there. They'll be putting the pole, the pole technically over the pool, which I don't think it should go, it should go 20 feet toward Grand View Ave. So it doesn't go over the view, over the, over the pool. You know, that's, I don't oppose them, you know, the pole being moved, but I think it should be away from the pool, on the opposite side of the street.
So if it's moved, it's going to be going over the pool?
Right, there's a pool right there.
Okay.
You know, and I don't think.
And in ground pool?
Above ground pool.
Above ground pool, okay.
Yeah, and I just think, you know, with a telephone pole with wires going over the top, with little kids swimming in there, I just think it should be moved down to the left toward Grand View Ave.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents, anybody opposed? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side. Councillors, city councillors, please. Councillor Cagliandro?
Thank you, Mr. President, this area is now Ward 3. Is it true what that gentleman says? I thought it was, I thought this was. Oh, Grand View, my apologies, well, I will defer to the Ward 6 councillor then.
Councillor Sorino?
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll actually defer to Councillor Silvestri, where it's one of his first meetings, so I will let him go first, and then I'd like to speak.
Councillor Silvestri?
Thank you. Councillor, I did get a few phone calls from a few of the neighbors over in that area, and I actually drove over there to take a look, and not only do I agree with Mr. Daddario about the pole location over the pool, I have a little bit of concern of the height with the wires for apparatus of the fire department and whatnot, making the wires from one side of the street now cross the street. So is that a concern that, is there another place the pole can go without crossing the street and without taking Mr. Daddario's driveway?
Yeah, I mean, with this consideration, I can go out with the city engineer, define a new location for the pole, yeah, we can do that, thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll withdraw that application, you're going to withdraw that application then, for that location, and then plan out a new location for the new pole?
Well, from what he's saying, it's going to be around the same vicinity, right? So moving 20 feet, I mean, I believe it's something, if it's been approved with that, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I'd like to see the new address and where it's going to be moved to, so maybe have a meeting with the engineer or whoever you have to meet with, and then reapply for the, the new pole designation, how's that?
That's fine.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Application has been withdrawn by National Grid, thank you.
Calendar item number five, hearing called is ordered on a petition submitted by National Grid to install an underground conduit encased in concrete at the intersection of Franklin Avenue and Hitchborn Street from pole number 2644 to provide power to a new development at 10 Franklin Ave, Revere, Mass.
Proponents, those in favor?
Yep.
Name and address for the record.
My name once again is Moses Okokoro, I'm here on behalf of National Grid Electric side, my address is 170 Metford Street in Malden. So on this petition, National Grid is requesting to install conduit from an existing pole towards a customer's property, so basically it will be cut through the sidewalk approximately about five to eight feet to get to that customer's property, thank you.
Any other proponents, those in favor? Hearing and seeing none, let's close that side. Any opponents, any opponents, any, anyone opposed? Hearing and seeing none, let's close that side. Councillors.
Mr. President?
Councillor Novoselsky?
Thank you, Mr. President, since this is my ward, and just so everybody know, this is the condominium that burnt down three years ago, and it's being rebuilt, and this will save some overhead wires going over the sidewalk, so, and sidewalk's going to be replaced anyways by the contractor. So I would say let's go for it, thank you.
Councillor Fiore?
Not on this particular matter, but if the gentleman can answer a question just very briefly, I had a call today from somebody in the Point of Pines. Do you, upon furnization of the issue, talk to and send it to the people, do you send a letter that you're actually going to do some work, because they had some underground work by National Grid today, and they were unaware, they were away, they had to come, send one of their neighbors to go over and move their car, so is there a letter sent to them?
Well, on this job, I'm not sure, but usually ideally we should send out, you know, letters if it's something that's going to impact on customers, you know, neighbors around.
So it's not the policy to send out generally?
Well, I don't know what consideration, under what, you know, scenarios they do and they don't, I don't work in operations, I'm an engineer, so it's something I can find out and ask someone to get in touch with you.
Okay, good, appreciate if you could, thank you.
Thank you, sure.
Any other councillors? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Shall the City Council grant a petition by National Grid to install an underground conduit for a new development at 10 Franklin Avenue? Councillor Cagliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Fiore?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Rizzo is absent, Councillor Rotundo is absent, Councillor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, the petition, yes, the petition has been granted. Calendar item number six, hearing called is ordered on the application of Mario Merengue, 42 Nahant Ave, Winthrop, Mass, seeking a Chapter 148 license from the Revere City Council to enable the appellant to operate a commercial garage at 22 Naples Road.
Proponents, those in favor?
Good evening, Mr. President and fellow councillors, fellow council members, my name's Chris Kreidler, I'm with Di Ambrosio LLP, representing Mr. Mario Merengue, and we are just asking that Mr. Merengue's shop at 22 Naples be permitted this, this license under Chapter 148, Section 13, in order to operate his commercial garage at that property. I will certainly defer any technical questions to Mr. Merengue if the council has any.
Any, we're going to, this is a public hearing, so any other proponents? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side. Any opponents, anyone opposed of this? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side. City councillors.
Thank you, Mr. President, so this is a license for heavy trucking repair, correct?
Mr. Councillor, I believe this is the application to store.
Can you speak in the mic?
Store, okay.
Can you speak in the mic, please?
Sorry, my apologies, I believe this is the application to store some flammable liquids on the site.
Could you just elaborate on that for us?
Absolutely, the application itself indicates that the desire is to store, I believe it's two point, looks like 125 cubic feet of oxygen, 140 cubic feet of acetylene, and perhaps some gasoline and diesel, approximately 400 gallons total. Now, the majority of the, anything stored inside will be diesel, which is not flammable, the, and the oxygen and acetylene is used for blow torches in order to take off any sort of frozen lug nuts or frozen bolts, things along those lines, those are the only purposes for this.
Thank you, have you contacted all the abutters, there's multiple businesses there, there's a residence, have you contacted them in regard to this?
Yes, when, when the application went out, the, we did contact the abutters list for all the direct abutters in accordance with the.
And what was the response?
We received no response.
Councillor Fiore.
Through you to the attorney, uh, Mr., is it Merengue?
Yes.
I noticed there's a sign up already. Is that in a court, does that something through you to the clerk maybe, that's legal, given that we haven't acted on a special permit?
Special permit was granted for the operation of a commercial garage at this location last year.
So this is just a, another request for-
For the license itself.
Yes.
Okay. I had heard the same thing with the, the tractor trailers. I wasn't a member of the council last year, but there is one residence there. I'll be opposed to it. I'll be voting against it. I, I don't think, I know Mayor Ego has a vision for the city, and I don't always agree with him, but I don't think this is in line with the vision of the city to have more, there's a big fire down there, as you know, years ago, you may, may, may not know, and I just don't, just not in favor of this type of business. I think we have enough of it, and I'll be voting against it.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Keith.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. You know, I, I've seen the business, and I know that Mario's Auto has done a really nice job. I think that they do a good job of maintaining their property. I think that that area has had some issues in the past, but I think that this business particularly has done a really nice job of kind of answering to the call and being the better neighbor. I mean, again, it is, it is auto body, there is, there is a business to be operated over there, it's off the major highway. I'm not suggesting this is in the middle of a densely populated residential street, but I think that for what they've done and what they've been doing, it's been, it's been done well. And I think the last time that they were in front of us, there were a litany of issues with some code violations out there, and it wasn't, it wasn't Mario's auto body, it was, it was a neighboring business, so I'd be in favor, but again, you know, I, I just, I don't find anything egregious over there.
Councillor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mario, across the street, you have conservation land, right? There's conservation land?
Uh, is there? Is there?
Do you have a marsh right across the street?
Yes, there is, yes.
That's conservation land?
Yep.
Um, there's been, in brown circle, we've had a number of truck accidents where they've poured the liquid, the chemicals came out and went into the, the, the conservation land down there. Where are you getting rid of the chemicals that you want to approve, that we have to approve tonight? Are you getting rid, are you getting rid of them properly? Is a, a business coming in and taking your chemicals that you're, that you don't use or waste?
So I, for this license we're going for-
Yes.
In, in general?
Yes.
We don't have any chemicals that need, at this location, that need to be dissolved. For what we are only requesting is a blow torch, which is used to settle in the oxygen to take off any frozen lug nuts or bolts. So with that, that has like a flame, with that, does not have to be disposed of, of anywhere, anywhere near the marsh, it's just heat, that's all it's coming out of.
Did you just ask for diesel fuel too?
Storage?
Yes.
That is on here, I think because of the vehicles, of the trucks itself.
Oh, okay.
Not storing gas or storing any type of liquids. It's just oxygen and the acetylene. The diesel in this situation is because we need to have trucks that are there, I believe, that's what that is there for.
Okay.
Not storing gas at a gas station like that.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Councillor Silvestri.
Yes, councillor, thank you. Mario, you guys do a great job, and, and you're, you know, you're an asset to the city. I, I just, my one concern, and I, I know many people look at oxygen like it's, it's not a dangerous thing, but will you have it properly stored? Is the garage gonna be properly ventilated? And issues, because there, there are OSHA regulations to storing oxygen tanks as well.
Yes, the acetylene and the oxygen are stored in cages that Deputy Cheever has already signed off on. Thank you.
Councillor Nowosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just as an FYI, I know we approved them to build the building, was it last year?
I think it was about two years ago. Or last year, yes.
And I know when they go to site plan review, they have to install oil separators in the drainage system, so they could clear out in case there's any kind of leak.
Yes, I do have that.
Yep, so I, I, I just want to make people comfortable that if there is a spillage, it's taken care of with what they put in.
Great, thank you. Councillor Serena.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, through you, I vaguely remember a couple of years ago, there was question on whether there would be bodywork at this location, or if it would strictly be mechanic work. Can you just elaborate on exactly what the scope of what will be taking place there?
At this location, there will be no bodywork being done, it was only for mechanical work only. That's what we needed torches for.
Thank you. That's not allowed by zoning, correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh-
The auto body is not zoned for that spot, correct?
That's right. Okay, no further discussion. Let's take, Madam Clerk, can we take a roll call on this?
Yes, you guys can roll this this evening.
Shall the City Council grant a Chapter 148 license for a commercial garage at 22 Naples Road? Councillor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Fiore.
No.
No, councillor Keith.
Yes.
Yes, councillor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Morbido.
No.
No, councillor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Rizzo is absent, councillor Rotundo is absent, councillor Serena.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, and councillor President Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, the Chapter 148 license has been granted. Calendar item number seven, hearing called as ordered on an ordinance amending metered rates of the revised ordinances of the City of Revere.
This is a public hearing, looking for proponents? Those in favor?
Mr. President, if I may, I'm recusing myself from this hearing.
Okay. Any proponents?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President-
Name and, name and address.
Ira Nowosowski, 53, D. Home Street. I am speaking today and recusing myself from this vote. I am, through the Ethics Commission, I have been suggested to recuse myself as a city councillor and as a landlord. I am speaking to you as a resident, and I know many of you heard me last year when we talked about this, but I'm gonna keep it short tonight, just ask you that, you know, we move on this, and I will speak again at the zoning in more detail. Thank you.
Okay. Any other proponents? Hearing and seeing none, we're gonna close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Those opposed? Hearing and seeing none, oh. Name and address for the record.
Mary Gandolfo, 619 Washington Ave, Revere.
Mary, would you pull that down so we can hear?
Yeah. Okay. Mary Gandolfo, 619 Washington Ave, Revere. I'm an opponent, I'm against this, and I'll tell you why. The reason is, these rates were set, I think, a long time ago fairly, and the reason I'm opposed is because residential apartment building owners collect rents. They make money. It is a business. Whereas your regular homeowner does not have a business, does not collect rents, does not make money, pays out of their own pocket in their budget every month. This amendment would take money from the city's budget. I'm not gonna debate how much, but it would, and other people will have to pick up the slack and repay that money. Now, I'll tell you this, this hurts our seniors, that's majorly why I'm against it. Our seniors wanted a water rate discount break. Our seniors deserve a water rate discount break. Our seniors are not getting a water rate discount break. I see them in the stores, and right now with prices, they pick up the meat, they look at the price, and they put it back in the refrigeration in the store. They can't afford it. So we should not be giving a price break to people who own apartment houses, who are collecting rents, and everyone knows rents are high, and rents are making a lot of money these days. It's not fair. So I am opposed, and I'm asking you all to not vote for this. It's not right.
Thank you. Any councillors wishing to speak on this matter?
No. Point of inquiry?
Yes. Go ahead, councillor.
This might be a question, maybe councillor Nowosowski or the clerk knows, as a landlord of only one unit, do I need to recuse myself from this conversation as well?
I don't believe so. No.
So one unit, this wouldn't affect you, but if you vote, you can certainly, you know, request an opinion from the Ethics Commission, but this would only affect folks, I'm sorry. This would only affect folks who would benefit financially if they have, you know, four or more units.
Thank you very much.
This is gonna go to committee, but if anybody, any, any other councillors have any questions on it?
Councillor, uh, thank you. I'm just, just to get a little clarification, so if it's four or more, it hits, or, or four is the break?
Right now, the way the motion, or the, it's, the motion was, it's four, not four or more, four units.
Okay.
Not more than four.
Not more than-
So it stops at four.
Okay.
So five and above would be commercial.
Thank you.
The way the motion was written.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions, we're gonna send this, we're gonna refer this to Ways and Means.
Next up is Communications, calendar item number nine, Communication from the City Auditor, requesting adoption of Mass General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 22A and 1/2, relative to a parking benefits district.
Mr. Visque.
Good evening, Richard Visque, CFO, 21 Broadway. What we have before you tonight is a section with a Mass General Law that would allow the city to create a parking benefits district, and I'm not sure if they're gonna be able to put this on the screen or not, but we have a brief presentation, and happy to talk more about it in committee if, that's the wishes, but basically, the parking benefits district is a geographic area specific to an area of the city where parking revenues can be collected and designated for use in that district. That proposed parking benefit district that we're speaking of are the metered areas of the city, which is primarily Broadway, Shirley Ave, and metered lots, including Central Ave and Shirley Ave as well. These parking benefit districts allow us to be flexible in the way we use these dollars. Right now, we currently just pay staffing and maintenance and capital costs of the meters themselves. We are proposing that the multi-space meters at the Central Ave parking lot, as well as any business permit parking programs and other permit parking programs within the benefit district, we use those funds for expanded uses such as public space improvements, which would be like public benches, barrels, tree planting and maintenance, some streetscape improvements, we're looking at pedestrian safety, snow removal, effort, security cameras, some green initiatives, including charging stations, LED solar initiatives, pretty much parking maintenance, mucking hydrants out, handicap spots, just trying to improve upon the, the district in which these meters are, and we're also proposing transportation improvements, which could include biking, walking, and mass transit. So parking benefits district is something that could be managed by a body designated by the city, and what we're recommending is the creation of a parking advisory committee. Parking advisory committee, as, as we recommend, would be a nine-member body, including the mayor, two city, mayor designee, two city councillors, two business owners, a member of the Traffic Commission, the CFO or designee, the chief of planning or designee, and the parking director of the city. So again, this is just proposed if a parking benefit district is created. We recommend that we create a parking advisory committee that would be well-represented and rounded to help implement some of these benefits that could derive from these new revenues. So in summary, we're asking the council to consider adopting Chapter 40, Section 22 and 1/2. If that law is adopted, we would then recommend creating a parking advisory committee to manage the parking benefits district, and then we would set up some ledgers according to Mass General Laws that would allow us to spend this money in compliance with, with that particular law, and look to have quarterly meetings to discuss finances, accomplishments, and goals of the parking benefits district. So happy to try to answer any questions on that. I have, Zach Abell is here, parking director as well, and we're here to try to answer any questions or whatever the council needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Visque and the parking director as well. Let me remind everybody, this is actually going into committee, so, but, any questions from the council? Councillor Fiore.
Through you to Mr. Visque. Could you tell me what the revenue is from parking meters annually?
Give me one second, I have a sheet over here. I think we, about $175,000 we realized last year. I do have six, is that over there? Thank you. Through six months, including December 2021, we have a grand total of $101,252 that we've collected through half a year. And just, just a comment on last year, we, we had a lot of construction on Shirley Ave that really curtailed a lot of the meter collection, so it appears that we may be on track for about $200,000 this year, councillor.
And through you too, Zach, I'm sorry, Zach, I don't know your last name? Okay. If you just, along the same lines, how much money did we produce in tickets last year, parking tickets?
I mean, I don't have that right off the, we don't have that with us, I can certainly get you that information, I believe it's about a million dollars.
Because, I mean, that's where the burden comes on the public.
Right, but this, this allows us just to use parking meter revenue, not, not parking ticket revenue, just to be clear.
And this council, and before I was a member, and I understand, voted to dedicate the central parking lot funds for the senior center use only.
That is not correct, councillor. That is, no. It did not-
Maybe there was some talk of it.
It was, there was some talk of it, but that, I believe, can't be done anyway.
Again, I mean, adopting this law allows us to create a parking benefits district that does give us some flexibility on how we spend these dollars. Again, we give a, a sample of what we think may be great uses, but certainly open to hear suggestions. I don't think we can specifically use it for the senior center per se, but-
Point of information.
Parking benefit district in general.
Hold on a second. Councillor Morbido, go ahead.
So I think what councillor Fiore is alluding to is, I did put forth a motion to put us, when they, when we found out that they were gonna put meters in the central parking lot, I did put a motion forth to use that revenue toward renovations of the senior center to give back to the seniors, and at that time, Mr. Visque said that wouldn't be possible.
Okay, Mr. President, through you to Mr. Visque, before those meters were installed, was that a vote of the city council or a decision of the administration?
Honestly, I inherited the, the law that was voted to allow the meters in there, and what we tried to do is place the meters in there to create some order of, in that lot.
Can a member speak to that, or the clerk?
Hold on.
Point of information. Because I, last summer, when I, when those meters went in, I kind of went a little crazy, and I spoke to the mayor, and we did the research, and it was actually the Traffic Commission-
Agreed.
Under, at the time, Clerk John Henry that, that mandated that. So that goes back, God knows, probably 20, 25 years.
Okay, well, I will be brief, but again, along the same lines, the more meters we put in, the more tickets we give out, and the public is just tired of the tickets, fines, and fees. So I, something I've talked about before, I would be of the position to remove those parking meters from the Central Avenue lot, because I just think it's crippling the downtown business district, and I, I just don't think it's user-friendly, and as I said, people are just tired of the tickets. So I, at some point, will be moving to do that, and I will be, arise in opposition to this tonight.
Mr. Chair, through you. Just to be clear to the general public, when we did put the meters in the central lot, it was really meant to create some organization in that lot, try to clean it up, and create a, again, a parking benefits district, and a lot that could serve the business district well. We do have a $100 a year business district parking permit plan that we've sold over 60 permits for, and also, we do charge half the rate in that lot, as we do on the streets, to encourage people to use the lot, so that it creates capacity for the businesses. So we, we feel it's a- So we, we feel it's a, a benefit to the businesses, not, not a harm.
Agreed, and, uh, I will say there has been some major renovations and some up, uh, maintenance in that lot, looks a lot different than what it originally looked like, so, uh.
That's the intended purpose, but we'd like to expand upon that.
Point of information. Thank you very much, Mr. President. So I, um, requested, um, by a motion, that you allow four parking spaces to be, um, not metered so they could be used by the residents. Is that happening?
I believe that would be business of the, um, Traffic and Parking Commission, so that won't be anything that would come from me per se.
Right, I think that went through the Traffic Commission too.
I'm not sure if that got voted on.
Oh, okay.
I believe that was tabled.
Okay.
Uh, Zach may be able to give you some insight.
Thank you.
Zach Babo, parking director, two-eighty-one, Revere Broadway. To answer your question, that was passed in the Traffic Commission, but there was no language on what these signs should read, who should be awarded them, which exact properties. So there was a little discussion about that before we go forward to talk to Paul Argenzio on where the sign location should be and exactly what the sign should say. So I think we need to narrow it down to exactly what properties on Assala Court that are awarded these four permit spots, and that way I know on who to look out for, when they come by to apply.
Well, maybe we could, I, I mean, these residents do need parking spaces without metering. Um, and I just, what?
No, go ahead.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. And, uh, maybe we can come up with some sort of a language that says, um, Assalo Place, resident parking only, and maybe give them some sort of a sticker or a placate. I have no idea, but we have to come up with something, because we do have a, a couple of people that are elderly that need these, this parking without paying for, um, you know, three, after three hours. So, thank you.
If I may intervene for a moment, um, because I believe I was at that traffic, uh, meeting, I, I don't believe, and, and correct me if I, I may be wrong, but I don't, I think that motion did get tabled, and the reason being was because of the fact that they could not designate, uh, those parking spaces for those people that you were requesting it for. It has, it, correct me if I'm wrong, okay?
I am correcting you, you are wrong.
I don't think so, but I, I'd like to.
Mr. Chairman.
If we can, uh, if we can, um, get some clarification from, um, the Traffic Commission, I'd like to hear that, but I, I believe that got tabled.
We're happy to address this with Counsel McKenna, but, uh.
Yeah.
We, we had to talk about the parking benefits.
Yes, and that has nothing to do with that, exactly. Thank you. Any qu, any further questions for the, uh, regarding the parking benefits district? This hearing, okay? This is gonna get referred to Economic Development. Thank you.
Calendar item number ten, Communication from the City Auditor Relative to the ARPA Fund Grant Summary.
Mr. Vizcay.
Hello again, uh, Richard Vizcay, CFO, twenty-one Broadway. We wanted to come before the council tonight and just give a, a, a brief update and overview for the new counselors, uh, that are on board, and, uh, congratulations to all the new counselors, by the way. The American Rescue Plan Act, uh, otherwise known as ARPA, as you hear that acronym thrown around, is the, um, is the program that was signed into law by President Biden on March eleventh, two thousand twenty-one. It established a coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund, which provides funds to municipalities to respond for the COVID pandemic. Revere is an entitlement community, and we receive funds directly from the U.S. Treasury. The covered period ends December twenty-twenty-four with obligations spent by the end of twenty-twenty-six. So briefly, um, for everybody's benefit, if they're not aware, the city, uh, is, uh, planning to receive thirty million dollars of, um, aid from ARPA. Nineteen point seven of that is direct municipal aid to us, and ten point three is, uh, through the county. Although the county's been abolished, we will then, uh, get that money transferred directly to us, which is ten point three million. We have received fifteen million, uh, fifty percent of that allocated money. Second half of that payment is due about twelve months from now. We have internally set up a, uh, process by which city departments are, are requesting usage of these funds based upon the allowable uses, and that process is driven by myself, the Chief of Staff, and the Director of Planning and Community Development as a vetting, uh, mechanism to ensure that all of the, um, the needs are, fall within the usages. And, um, once approved, it's sent to the mayor for final approval. So we do have an internal form that is, uh, used by departments and requested funds, and, um, and we take them on a case-by-case basis. And please talk me if, uh, you want to ask any questions, I can just keep going. So, uh, what are the budgeted ineligible uses that we set up? So we set up a pro forma budget, and we've allocated, again, these are, these numbers aren't set in stone because things can come up, but we, we, we decided to treat this like any other fund. We created a budget, we have five point three million dollars set up to respond to the public health emergency, and that's such things as COVID testing, vaccination, contact tracing, PPE, isolation and quarant, quarantine efforts, uh, medical expenses, and mental health services as such. There is, um, uh, travel, tourism, and hospitality eligible use, which is basically to help with the economic recovery of the city. We are looking to fund the travel and tourism department to try to attract, uh, uh, some, uh, additional business, uh, business for, uh, business owners and hotel owners and such, and, uh, looking to try to create activities and events in the city that will, and draw more visitors to the city, quite frankly, um, that will help us increase some rooms tax, meals tax, and, and more potential customers for local businesses. We have, uh, Household Assistance Budget at four point eight million. Household assistance would be such things as food programs, rent, mortgage, utility aid, eviction protections, uh, job assistance training, internet access programs, and the like. Uh, we have three point nine million earmarked for small business and nonprofit assistance, which is, uh, financial support to small businesses and nonprofits that have declining revenues and increased costs due to the pandemic. And we're also providing funds for COVID-related expenses, PPE, signage, communication, social, et cetera. Water and soil infrastructure is also ineligible use. We have seven point three million earmarked for water and soil infrastructure, which, uh, includes stuff like stormwater, wastewater treatment, energy conservation, uh, new infrastructure, transmission, distribution, et cetera, et cetera. And, um, we do have a five point three million dollar contingency. Again, we, we have to see where these dollars are, um, are going and, and what we feel are the most, uh, proper uses to, um, get the most bang for our bucks. So, um, as it stands right now, some of the planned uses that we have, we have, uh, COVID testing services for our residents and our employees set up, um, at the Senior Center. We are, uh, in the process of creating a Health and Wellness Center at the location of three-twenty-one Charger Street. That will be a Health and Wellness Center for the employees and the residents of the city. A lot of this is being developed as we speak, but, um, those are some of the planned uses with regard to public health. Household assistance, we have housing cost relief, uh, through, uh, Revere owner-occupied properties that was, uh, distributed as part of the third quarter tax bill. Many of you may have got that notification. We do have a restaurant recovery program that we are doing for small businesses. We do have some, uh, significant water and soil infrastructure projects planned for, uh, fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three, as well as, uh, the creation of a, a travel and tourism department in the city, again, to help, uh, with some of the economic downturn that these businesses had. So those are some of the planned uses we have for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-two fiscal years. I got some list of ineligible uses. We cannot deposit any of this money into pension funds for purposes of reducing unfunded liability. We can offset reductions in tax revenue. We can't pay debt with it or legal settlements with it. There's a, a few other things that we cannot do with it. We do have, uh, um, my, uh, assistant here, Miguel Aral, he is a CPA. He has come on, he is spearheading all of the, uh, efforts in, in accounting for this money, ensuring that we are complying with all of the state and federal regulations and, um, and just keep in order to, uh, not only these dollars from ARPA, but all of the, uh, coronavirus, uh, funds that we've received, either through the CARES Act or through FEMA and MIMA and, and such. So, um, again, we're just here to kind of provide an update, happy to try to answer any questions. Certainly, if this goes to committee, we can get more detailed, but, uh, just wanted to keep everybody in, uh, the loop on where we stand, and again, happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vizcay. Like I, uh, uh, like Mr. Vizcay said, this is actually, uh, gonna end up going to Ways and Means, but I'm happy to, uh, yeah, have, uh, some input from the counselors. Counsel Sylvesteri.
Thank you, Counsel. Through you to Mr. Vizcay, um, would one of those uses, uh, would we be able to, you know, give our first responders, um, uh, between five hundred and a thousand dollars? I mean, the firefighters, they put their lives on the line every day during COVID, and, um, it might be, you know, that, that might be something that shows, uh, re, uh, our appreciation to what they have done. You know, when everyone else was running, they were going in, uh, just like they do with fires.
I was gonna defer to Miguel for that answer, again, he's, uh, got these rules pretty down to.
Hi, so Miguel Aral, Center forty-seven, Woodrow Avenue. So I think with the new rules, that could possibly be eligible, but if, um, but based on my research so far, like, we can't, so I think that would fall into the category of premium pay, and that's really more for, um, low-income workers. So I think a general rule, again, Massachusetts, is that we can offer premium pay, but those workers would have to, as a, as a baseline, like, less than twenty dollars an hour. And I think most of our first responders, um, with overtime and everything, they're probably making a lot more than that. So at this point, I'll do a little bit more research on that, but based on my research so far, I would say that would be kind of tough to, like, prove to the U.S. Treasury that, um, you know, someone making, like, a seventy thousand dollar base, they got ten to fifteen thousand dollars in overtime plus police details, they wouldn't really be considered like a low-income worker for a premium pay.
Thank you.
Counsel Cogliandro.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Just a, a quick question, uh, small business and nonprofit assistance. Will there be a method of selection, will there be a form to fill out? Will it be distributed evenly throughout all the small businesses in the city? Or, uh, it's, you know, the last time there was small business funding, uh, funding given, there were some businesses that were left out of that. So I'm just curious of the selection process, if you have that information.
I can't speak too specifically to each program. Again, uh, the Planning and Community Development Office may submit a request for a certain program that would be vetted through and, uh, voted yes or no. I know we did have a, a pretty strong small business program. I understand that they may have left some of the real small, under-five-employee businesses. And I, I do believe that, uh, Tech in her department has just rolled out a, a micro-business, uh, grant program that is serves the five employees and under. Again, I, I don't want to speak too specifically about it, or don't hold me to it, but, um, the, the, there's no particular, uh, guidelines on how big or small these, uh, programs can be, but we're, we're doing our best to vet all the requests and either, um, use the dollars allowed or, or, or use a different pocket of money, or, again, it's, it's encouraged that we leverage these dollars as best we could, so we're really trying to leverage these dollars against other grants, other revenue sources, et cetera, to try to help out. What we do want to be careful of, though, is that these dollars are one-time dollars, and we're trying to set up programs that don't create funding cliffs or unsustainable, um, uh, financial obligations to the city. As everyone knows, we have a pretty big one coming down the road. So we're really trying to use these dollars in ways that will, uh, uh, allow us to, uh, either, uh, carry out, uh, the programs with operating funds, maybe pass them over to, um, uh, nonprofits or third-party resources, or just simply infrastructure costs that will serve the community, uh, for, for years and years down the road with these one-time dollars. So we're really trying to take it all into consideration.
Thank you very much.
Counsel Serino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Not to get ahead of the, uh, the agenda, but later on tonight, I'm gonna be presenting a motion with regard to possibly creating or looking into the feasibility of creating a snow shoveling program whereby we utilize unemployed veterans of Revere to shovel the homes of other veterans and retired first responders, elderly veterans and retired first responders. But it sounds like through, um, Miguel's comments, that perhaps, as we discuss that motion, ARPA funding might be kind of a good way to, um, to fund such a program. Would I, would I be correct in saying that?
Yeah, I, again, when we get the applications, we vet through them. If we think that they have to be sculpted in a different manner to hit some of the categories that are allowable, we try to guide that process to get them back to accept them. There is, um, there are options to fund programs that don't fall into these categories with revenue replacement. Uh, we're trying to do our best to kind of use these funds as, as they're allowed by, um, the federal government, but there are also options to potentially fund stuff that may not fit exactly into one of these. So, um, we can talk offline about the process, but we do have, uh, on our, on our laser fish, we do have an application that's filled out, sent to Miguel, vetted out, and then distributed to us, and we meet weekly to, to review these, uh, requests and, and try to fund them accordingly.
Thank you, Counsel Serino. If there's no further questions, we're gonna refer this to Ways and Means.
Thank you.
Further discussion, thank you, Mr. Vizcay.
Calendar item number eleven, Communication from the Mayor Relative to the Appointment of Megan Simmons Hurling to the Planning Board.
Appointments.
Calendar item number twelve, Communication from the Mayor Relative to a Request for Special Municipal Employee Status for various Revere Public Schools Athletic Department Positions.
Counsel Keith.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to bring this up really quickly. This, this was partially, uh, out of a request for myself, because we, we do get these in front of us sometimes in talking with the clerk and making this a little bit less of an adjuvant process. So just to clarify, what this does is, if you work at the DPW, you work, or you, if you work in, uh, another city department, and you go to coach or assistant coach the JV basketball team, or the, the high school baseball team, or you referee a city, uh, event, referee at the Parks League, in order to get paid, you have to come in front of us for the special municipal status. Sometimes it's twenty-eight hundred dollars a year. Sometimes, there's been some coaches that have waited almost two years to get paid. They've done the job, of course, uh, and they're not really stressed over it. They're making, you know, pennies on the doll, pennies on the dollar for their time, but they're volunteering, well, not volunteering, they're doing this time, coaching a JV sport. It can, you know, as you know, you've coached, and you still coach with hockey. It takes a lot out of you. So having them to have to draft this letter and get this special status, it's a bit of a pain. We figured this would make it easy on the si, school, um, athletics department to just grant, grant these into that category so that they don't have to come in front of the City Hall, sorry, City Council to get that stipend. I think it would make sense. Thank you.
Any questions? If there's, uh, no further questions on this, I'd like to, uh, have a vote on this tonight. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll on this?
On the motion, shall the City Council grant special municipal employee status for the Revere Public Schools Athletic Department Positions as listed in the attached communication? Counselor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fiore.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nowoselski.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo was absent, Counselor Rotundo was absent, Counselor Serino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, special municipal employee status has been granted. Onto motions, calendar item number thirteen, Motion Presented by Counselor Cogliandro That Certificates of Appreciation Be Awarded to the Following Individuals In Recognition of Their Work at the Veterans Food Bank Since the Beginning of the Pandemic in 2020. Richard Savage, Kathleen Savage, Janine Zicella, Ella De Prima, Carol Pisafieri, June Deneen, Donald Boudreau, Betsy Martinez, Bill Reedy, Sean Morris, John Coyne, Nick Rudolph, and Mark Matheson.
Counsel Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've had the, the privilege of working with an amazing team, uh, thanks to the VSO. The food bank down there feeds hundreds of families every time it's run, and these people have worked in this food bank since, it's coming up on two years, and they truly deserve some recognition, and, uh, I'm, I'm really looking forward to presenting, so, thank you.
All in favor, all opposed? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
Mr. President, I'm sorry.
Counsel Serino.
Mr. President, if I might, if Counselor Cogliandro, uh, would you be amenable to adding Donna Dresen as well? Because Donna, although she is an employee, I think we can all agree, goes over and above, uh, with regard to that.
If you agree to tell her, because she demanded she didn't want to be recognized. Is that, is that correct, VSO?
Well, we can, we can give her that. Let's give it to her anyway.
I'm, I'm on board with it.
How modest of her, but I'm in favor of that.
She deserves it more than all of us, no offense, uh, Counsel. She deserves it, she deserves it more than all of us. No offense, uh, councilor.
Absolutely not.
Okay. All in favor, all opposed?
Aye.
So ordered. Uh, that scheduled presentation will be for February 7th. Is that okay? Great.
Calendar item number 14, motion presented by Council Morabito, Councilors Morabito and McKenna, that the mayor request the DPW to install a memorial plaque at the Louis Pasteur Park in recognition of Susan Coppola, who was a beloved person in the Beauchamp community.
Council Morabito.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm actually going to give, um, Council McKenna the opportunity to speak first since it's her world.
Thank you. And before I speak on my motion, um, Mr. President, you are a lot younger than I am, and remember, remember things better than I do. So, I apologize. It was tabled.
No worries.
No, I'm just trying to be funny.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, two weeks ago, we lost, uh, a longtime Beauchamp girl. Uh, her family, uh, was, uh, settled in Beauchamp, and she was raised in Beauchamp, and, uh, she happened to live next to the Louis Pasteur School. Uh, when the Louis Pasteur School was torn down, the Louis Pasteur Park was created. Her father would go every night, um, for years, and lock the gates of the Louis Pasteur, um, Park at dusk. When the father passed away, and we redesigned the Louis Pasteur Park, Susan Collaruso Coppola, who passed, and her children maintained the park and locked it every night at dusk until she moved. So, this is so appropriate to give her, uh, maybe down the road, a bench in her name, but right now, immediately, we should put a plaque, uh, just honoring her service to the city and her family's service to the city. So, thank you, um, Council Morabito, for putting me in, on this motion, and, and I would like to, um, give the floor to Council Morabito.
Council Morabito.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I couldn't think of a better way to memorialize Susan, um, because she was so beloved by the community. Everyone who's had, had interacted with her had such a positive, um, experience, and she's just connected with so many people in the Beauchamp area and throughout the city, and I think this is just a great way to remember her and think of all the memories people shared with her.
Thank you, Council, Counselor Nowoselski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, through you to either one of the speakers, what kind of plaque are we talking about?
Typical memorial plaque.
Or maybe for her service, her family, and her family's services, too.
What is, what, what are you thinking of doing? What does it look like?
Do you have a recommendation, Counselor Nowoselski?
My, my target is, I hope it's not one of those black plaques.
I, I, I don't think it's gonna...
Because we already have a rule that those are only for veterans.
Okay, well, we won't do that.
So, if you wanna do something else, you know, the bench, the bench you wanna do, you can do. I don't, I don't mind that.
Listen, let's not get into this conversation here. Let's not be insensitive to the topic of the conversation.
Okay, all right, let's go. My, my veteran comrades.
No, no, I, I, I completely agree. We're not gonna, uh, if this passes, it wouldn't be similar to a veterans' back plaque. I wouldn't think that that would be the case, at all. Okay? And we can, we can, we can discuss what that plaque would be.
With all due respect to her, and I understand that, but, you know, sometimes, you know, you don't wanna, don't wanna cross the line.
Uh, completely understand where you're coming from. All right? But I don't think that was the intention of both.
I didn't know. That's why I was asking.
All in favor, all opposed? So ordered. Next motion?
Calendar item number 15, motion presented by Council McKenna that the mayor be, uh, I'm sorry, request the appropriate departments to use a less invasive rodent poison when baiting. Data shows that the wildlife food chain is being affected and are killing off hawks, coyotes, owls, cats, dogs, et cetera, from this lethal poison. A less invasive poison would help protect wildlife and would be of equal cost compared to the current rodent poison.
Council McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so, I've been trying to put this in for the last year, and it's been getting shot down. So, I'm putting it in again, but, um, I have talked to the site supervisor and the Friends of Belle Isle Marsh Committee, and what they're seeing, and I'm gonna, he, he gave me, he sent me over, uh, all this data on what's going on at Belle Isle Marsh, and I gave it to all the councilors for them to read, but I'm gonna read this. Uh, I took bits and pieces out of what he wrote. So, uh, since the construction is at the maximum in Revere, and I don't know if anybody knows, but they're gonna put this big apartment building across the street from Belle Isle Marsh, and where the, um, casket, uh, company was on the corner, they're gonna put a gigantic, um, uh, residential apartment building. Um, so, since construction is at its maximum in Revere and, um, we'll say Orient Heights, baiting rats is at the highest demand. In the budding, in, in the abutting marshland, we have many different species, such as owls, coyotes, hawks, and other animals, and mammals, were affected. The rats, after eating the current poison, experience a horrible death. They live three days, suffering, searching for water, then bleed out. From there, they are picked off by the food chain of animals, which poison the animal that digests, digests the poison rodents. These animals then also die a horrible death. The poisons that we currently use to bait rodents never break down. They have a hundred-year shelf life. This is affecting the ecosystem in, in a catastrophic way at the Belle Isle Marsh. Uh, what the site supervisors at Belle Isle Reservation and all across Massachusetts are seeing is a disturbing death rate amongst these animals, and including dogs and cats. There are many less invasive ways to kill rats without affecting the food chain and will kill off rodents quickly, and to name a few, there is rat ice, which is dry ice. Uh, there's natural predators, such as hawks and eagles. Uh, electrocuting traps that will kill a whole colony of rats, which I don't really think that's, uh, uh, less invasive, but there's, um, the most, uh, nice way to do this is snap traps, just like mice traps. If we continue to overlook these factors, because wildlife is not a primary concern for people, these chemicals that we bait rodents with that never break down could get into our water table and eventually into our food. The overall use of these chemicals are short-sighted from public health and safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Council McKenna. Any questions? Um, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 16, motion presented by Councilor Serino that the mayor request Mast Dot to change the configuration of the light at the movie theater site on Squire Road for the time being to a blinking red light. This is a second request to Mast Dot as an initial request was made in the fall of 2021.
Who is this? Council Serino?
Thank you, Mr. President. At the risk of repeating myself from, uh, when I spoke about this last in September, as we know, the movie theater is actually now totally torn down, so it's gone, but that light, that traffic light between there and Squire Road remains. So, we have folks who literally, we have to stop, um, at a traffic light that is just totally useless because there are no cars coming out of the movie theater. Uh, we, we did pass this in September. The mayor sent it to Mast Dot. Unfortunately, Mast Dot has not yet, uh, taken action. So, I would like to try to get that done as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 17, motion presented by Councilor Serino that the mayor look into the feasibility of establishing a snow shoveling program whereby the city utilizes and compensates unemployed veterans of the city to shovel the homes of elderly veterans and elderly retired first responders. Criteria shall be established to ensure only the neediest residents receive this service, and the program itself can be modeled on similar city programs whereby seniors and students are compensated for their work. This program could be under the auspices of the Veteran Service Office.
Mr. President, I'd like to recuse myself from this motion.
Counselor? Okay. Council Serino?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, this, this stems from a resident on, uh, Sagurni Street, who's an 86-year-old retired Revere police officer, and he calls me once every winter, at the beginning of the winter, our first snowfall. He and his wife live in their house. They don't have family nearby. They can't afford to have their, uh, their home shoveled. Now, we have the JROTC Snow Angel Program, which is tremendous, and I, I thank them for their work. Uh, we have, also have ROKA, folks from ROKA who go out and shovel. Uh, this individual has been on the waitlist for the JROTC Snow Angel Program for at least two years now. Um, so I kind of got to thinking, because I feel bad, I know that with the JROTC Snow Angel Program, once you're in the Snow Angel Program, you don't get taken off. There's no, uh, kind of revolving list. So, what ends up happening is, is that the backlog has kind of gotten... Mr. President, if, if we might have quiet in the chamber, please, decorum.
Can we have some quiet in, in the chamber, and let's all, uh, listen to, uh, Council Serino's motion? How's that?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay.
So, I kind of got to thinking creatively. You know, he's, he's a retired Revere police officer, and it got, you know, I kind of just was thinking, and what if we had a program separate from the Snow Angel Program and separate from ROKA, whereby we take, we, we utilize veterans of the city who are unemployed, who could, you know, could use some extra money, and hired them for the winter, paid them based on, you know, snowstorms, and have them shovel the homes of retired elderly veterans and retired first responders. I think it would be a win-win. We'd be putting, um, community veterans who are in need of employment to work, and we would be taking care of residents who, um, need their homes shoveled out. I think that could actually help to reduce the backlog on the Snow Angel Program waitlist, because I'm sure, on that waitlist, I'm sure there are veterans in there. I'm sure there are, you know, retired first responders. So, I think for funding sources, we could possibly use ARPA. Um, this wouldn't be a heck of a lot of money. I mean, I can't imagine for, you know, per year, it would be more than 20,000 to 30,000, if, you know, if that. Um, but obviously, we can iron out the details and make sure that only folks who truly are in need of such a program would, you know, would be able to utilize it. But those are my thoughts, and, uh, I would appreciate the council's support.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Morabito.
Thank you. Um, so, my questions would be more, how would you categorize these employees? Would they, would they be employees? Would they be independent contractors? Would they be vendors? Um, is there, are they seasonal? But then I was thinking, you know, currently, we have the summer program for the DPW. Why not have the, the young kids, you know, that work for DPW extend their winter program, and they can shovel out the veterans, the retired teachers, the re, the seniors? And I think that would be more enticing, because we have the young, youngsters out there that can help them out as well. So, that may be an avenue we wanna look at as well.
Any other questions? Um, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Nowoselski, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. President, this is a great idea. Um, it's funny that this came up about s, snow shoveling, and, and I think, you know, putting the program together, you know, I don't mind passing this tonight, kinda as-is, and leave it up to the mayor to let his department heads determine the best way to manage it. But I just wanna, if I can, uh, I'd like to add one specific item as to, uh, what is being shoveled, other than senior citizens. And I, I said something to the mayor last fall about city sidewalks adjacent to parks and city properties are never, ever shoveled. Never shoveled. And I think it's incumbent, the city makes people shovel in front of their houses, why doesn't the city shovel in front of their own properties? So, I was, I just wrote down a motion even before this came up, that, uh, the city be required, basically, to shovel along all city properties, i.e. parks and other sidewalks. And I'm wondering if we could squeeze that in, um, about, uh, shoveling the homes of elderly and veterans and first responders, and city property sidewalks. So, is that...
Council Serino.
Mr. President, I would 100% be amenable to that and would like to see that, because I can tell you, I know that we've, when I worked in the reps' office years ago, we would get calls regarding the sidewalk, actually, near Erecola Park and near, like, the Romney Marsh Academy, where that's public property. People would say, oh, you know, the state needs to take care of the sidewalk, but it is actually, it's the responsibility of the city to maintain sidewalks. So, I think, you know, this would be great. This would fall right in line with making sure.
Point of information?
Stay your point, Council.
Thank you. I think two years ago, uh, or three years ago, Jessica Janino and I, Councilor Janino, Rep. Janino and I, put in a motion on, uh, ice, removal of ice and snow, and we, it is included with the city property that they, uh, remove the snow or ice within the 20, 24 hours. So, I think it is in the motion. There is a motion or an ordinance that says that they have to remove it within 24 hours.
Mr. President, can we respond, please, if I may? It, it, it's nice, it's nice that it was done, you know, that was put in a motion, but in two years, it hasn't been done. So, I think they need a reminder.
That's a, that, that's a whole nother issue. At least that, that motion has been put in. Um, Mr. DeChico.
Uh, Ralph DeChico, Revere Commission on Disabilities, uh, 281 Broadway, Revere. Uh, just a point of information, I have tried to do this over three, four years ago with the Commission on Disabilities as a volunteer program. Uh, just the best way to do this is you have a list of volunteers in the neighborhoods, and you put them with residents in the area, but the only problem with this is, I'm letting you know right now, you're gonna get phone calls 24 hours a day, seven days a week when a storm hits. You're also gonna take away from the JROTC, um, and what's gonna happen is, you're, you're, you're gonna have people that they're, uh, it's, it's gonna be tough to man. It's gonna be very hard to control. My suggestion is you would reach out to the city of Somerville to see how they're doing it. They have a program instituted, um, and follow, follow their model, uh, in doing it. The other problem that you have, if you want to pay, uh, people to do this, is you're gonna need liability insurance. Um, they're going onto people's properties, uh, to do it. I'm not trying to put a damper on this. There's, there's, there's a lot more involved than just, just cleaning, cleaning the snow, uh, and ice. Um, it's, it's not as simple as that. Um, there's a, there's a lot that has to, that has to go into it. Um, but my suggestion, and the students in, is there, it would only be for when they're not in school, and it's not how it would be years ago. You used to get the kids, they used to go around shoveling everywhere. Um, but, uh, not, not anymore. They don't do it. But for, for the veterans and whatnot, you could do a, an abatement. I would not wanna see seniors going around shoveling anywhere. Um, that's, that's not a thing, but young veterans that are coming back, um, as seasonal employees for the DPW on call, that, that's a way to do it, but it, it's, it's a, it's, it's a big undertaking. It's a department in itself, just to let you know.
Thank you, Count, uh, Mr. DeChico. Council Serino?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, of course, am not trying to diminish or take anything away from the JROTC Snow Angel Program. It is a tremendous program, and the, the kids do amazing work under Major Booker. Um, I just think this would supplement, because, again, as ward councilors, we get the calls. We already get them 24/7. So, we, um, this kind of gives an avenue where I can say to Mr., you know, X, Y, and Z, that, you know, I understand you're not gonna be able to get on the, in the Snow Angel Program this year, but we have this avenue, because you are a veteran or, you know, and it wouldn't be retired veterans, elderly veterans that are shoveling. It would be more in line with younger, you know, my generation, maybe a little older, um, that would be out there. And, um, to, I was gonna say to Council Morabito's point, but I think, uh, we'll just leave it to the mayor. I, I kind of like that idea, to leave, um, that to the mayor. So, with that, Mr. President, I hope we can vote this out.
Sure. Um, if I may, I, I, I like this, uh, this motion, and, uh, I think, uh, we can leave it to the mayor to, to, um, fine-tune it. fine-tune it. And like you said, I don't think it's taking away from the JROTC since they've already have a list that is pretty much closed, and you can't get on it right now. So, we're looking for an avenue, you know, to help some of the residents. So, I'm in favor of this. And all in favor, all opposed? Oh, as amended, as amended. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered. Next motion.
Calendar item number 18, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro that the mayor direct the police chief to increase patrols at all intersections of Romney Road. Drivers are speeding, running through stop signs, and driving the wrong way on one-way streets in that area.
Counsel Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just this afternoon, I received an email from a family on Gage Ave that was complaining about this very issue. This has been going on for so long. There's so many stop signs on Romney Road that people are constantly rolling through them. Over the summer, last summer, we had issues with dirt bikes or motorbikes just blowing through the stop signs completely. You know, those side streets go one way. You know, a lot of people are, you know, driving up the one way, especially on my street, on Newman Street. I see cars going the wrong way every single day. So, if we could get some increase in patrols there, hopefully, it would stop people from doing that. Thank you.
Counsel Serena.
Mr. President, as we share Romney Road with the gentleman from Ward 3, I fully support this motion and ask that we pass it.
All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Mr. President, a personal privilege.
Stay your point.
Just a reminder to the residents of Revere that tomorrow is an election day. Tomorrow, we will be going to the polls at one polling location, at St. Anthony's Church, for the question on the new vocational high school. So, polls are open. It's a very strange election. Polls are only open from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., but we all vote at St. Anthony's Church. So, please get out to vote tomorrow night, tomorrow.
Okay. That concludes our meeting. Motion to adjourn to the next meeting, which will be February 7th. Thank you.